Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 17th, 2018, and first ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance.) To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Reverend Womack could not be here with us this evening. I think he had a family situation. So, in lieu of that, I will ask everyone to stand and provide a moment of silence. And in this moment of silence, at least, among other things, if we could just remember the victims of the Hurricane Florence and also the long road of recovery that they will be facing down east. Amen. We've got a few folks signed up this evening. First is Jeanne Pierce.
Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the freedom to be here. And we do pray for our constituents down east who have horrible situations. I am getting the horse before the cart just because that's the way the sessions go, but I would like to say, thank you. I believe that you're going to go with the lawsuit and sign. And I would like to think about tomorrow after the lawsuit. And I just want to put something in your mind to be thinking about, to get ideas about, praying about, because if we get money, one county will not make a big difference. But if we get every of the western seven counties on board, and that's going to be my next project, is to go to these counties and try to get them on board with the lawsuit, then we can form an alliance and have a different services in different counties, but in our district. And we will no longer be stepchildren, we will be Cinderella, and we will show in the counties, because we will do the rehabs and the mental health and drug court and all those things that are needed to fight the drug situation. We will have the exemplary services here in western North Carolina. And that money will allow us to do that. So I am asking you to think it over, to let me know how you feel about an alliance of seven counties going together to get services in western North Carolina that are desperately needed. We need long-term rehab, we need drug court, we need juvenile rehab, we need mental health issues, facilities, and we need maybe several. But we have a lot of all those issues. And so, we need to step up. And if we get the money to do it, otherwise, we'll never get that kind of money. And so, and those things are very expensive. And so, I want to have you aware and thinking about an alliance with the seven counties to get those facilities we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Next is Kenneth Henson.
My name is Kenneth Henson. I'm chairman of the Republican Party. And I'm here to talk to y'all today about a lot of phone calls I've had, a lot of concerns, like as in really a lot of phone calls, and concerning things that's going on here. I am not here today to defend Mike Matthews, but to defend firing free elections. It's nothing about Mike Matthews. Mike Matthews was elected in 2014 by the people. That election was not about Mike Matthews. It was a referendum on the past tax collector because Mike was virtually unknown across much of the county. He was not even known at all in Bethel, at all. In spite of the people voting for Mike Matthews, you opposed Mike in every way you could. You changed the rules, you changed the bonding, you made statements in the newspaper against him before he even took office. And this is a fact. When your efforts failed to unseat him, you took additional actions. Democrat-controlled commissioners placed a defeated Democrat over the duly-elected Republican tax collector. Then you began discussions to make changes to the way the tax collector is chosen. You want to make this an appointed position so that the people do not choose the tax collector. If you get your way, it will become another appointed position under the complete control of the commissioners. Now, I want you to listen to this. In the Bible, the tax collector was the most hated person. The commissioners of that time, the Caesar or the kings, of that time appointed the tax collector. He showed no mercy or empathy for the people. He answered to the government commissioners, the commissioners of the day, or the Caesars of the day. In Haywood County, we still elect our tax collector. We are the only county in North Carolina that has it right. We're the only county that has this right. No other county has it right, we do. In a constitutional republic, the people choose the way the tax collector owes his loyalty to the people, not to the five county commissioners. That's what elections and free people are about, to hold you accountable. We are opposed to allowing the commissioners to appoint a tax collector. The county commissioners paid tens of thousands of dollars for an audit and other investigations to prove he was doing something wrong. In the end, you had no evidence that would hold up in court or any way to do anything to him. We know with your track record towards him, if you could have proved jaywalking, then we would have heard about it in the local newspapers or in a court of law. And if y'all could have found something to put him in jail, he would be in jail. There is no doubt in my mind about that. And there's no doubt in y'all's mind about it. If the commissioners were concerned about the number of hours that the tax collector works, then why did the commissioners steal the duly-elected Democrat tax collector away from the tax office to put David Francis to work in several other departments? The Democrat Francis could not have worked a full 40-hour week because he had been hired away by the commissioners. The result was that the tax office had to hire additional workers to cover for that elected tax collector since he was busy doing other things. Now, if y'all, all of a sudden, the commissioners are concerned about the hours the tax collector is working, one commissioner was reported to say in the newspaper that it is stealing from the taxpayer for the tax collector to work less than 40 to 50 hours a week. And I agree with that. It's 100% stealing, if you do that. In the past, they allowed the Democrat David Francis to work a reduced load and use hired employees to cover for him. The people elected him to be their tax collector, and the people paid him for a 40 to 50-hour work week as the tax collector. That's what he was elected to do, by the people. He should not have been accepted the other jobs that you offered him, that were, he shouldn't have accepted ones that were offered to him. He should have done, been in the tax office like we expect Mike Matthews to be. We would like to think that the commissioners should know better and never ask Mr. Francis to work other positions while he was being paid as elected official officer. He shouldn't have accepted it, y'all shouldn't have offered it. It was wrong. There has to be statutes for that. If there's not, there has to be written. You cannot make a right out of that, no way. So, if they think it was wrong for Mr. Matthews to work less, then why is it not stealing for David Francis to work less hours in the tax office? Why was it not different then? What is the difference? And this is not about David Francis either. I would have done what David Francis done. You had offered me more money? I'd have said, bring it on, boys. Everybody here would have. David Francis is not the guilty one. It's the commissioners that's guilty. Y'all were elected too. Mr. Francis was paid for a 40 to 50 hours a week at the tax office and even received another $20,000 to $25,000 a year for jobs he performed during the same 40-hour work week. The double standard is not acceptable. As elected commissioners, you represent the whole county, and you should not lure yourselves into partisanship. You should not do that. The tax collector swears that "I will not allow my actions as tax collector to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations." It sounds like you need to swear a similar oath, because that's what happened here. At the local level, this double standard reminds us of the Mueller investigation. It's exactly like the Mueller investigation, no more or no less. This newspaper article I have in my hand is right here, right here in my hand. This newspaper I have in my hand is an attack on my character. The title is "Unfire Collection Practices in the Tax Collector's Office," which implies that I am receiving special privileges. The paper cannot be trusted to get the story right. It was not wrong, but the paper made it sound bad. I did owe them taxes. If you have any response to this, I want to hear it now. I don't want to go back there and sit down and y'all blast me. The people deserve to know about this. The people are concerned about this. And if I'm wrong right here, I want you to tell me I'm wrong. And I will have any dialogue with y'all, and we will get this straight, and we will be fair about this. The people wants to know about this. But if I go back there and sit down and y'all say, "Well, this is this and this is that," no, it's not. What I've said is the truth, and if you have any problem with it, you need to come out with it right now. And we need to do what's right. And we just can't, can't sweep this stuff under the rug. The deal with my taxes is, Kurt Krupatrick, I filled this real pretty yard y'all got out here, I filled it in. They didn't pay me, Brandon. I've never been paid for it. Have I been paid for it, Kurt?
I don't know. I can't answer that right now, Kenneth.
Yeah, you know, you told me I'd be paid.
But Kenneth, I-
I've never been paid for that stuff. And I was going to try to bring-
Mr. Henson, please, just give me just a second. Mr. Henson, you know, we limit these things to three minutes, and I want to make sure that you get to finish, but also, you've got to understand that we're not going to enter into a dialogue with you this evening. We don't do that with anyone, and we're not going to do that this evening. Now, there may be some responses. If you wanted to enter into dialogue, I mean, obviously, there's different one of us that-
I didn't think y'all would. I don't think y'all would. I just wanted to, and I knew it would be your response.
Okay.
But, but this is only fair.
Okay, I'll give you 30 seconds to finish up.
You know what I did out there. David Francis knows what I did, that I put that dirt out there, and I have never been paid. You told me, and Cotton Headler was with me, that I had come to the wrong people. I would get paid. Brandon knows about it. David Francis knows about it. I had Marty Stamey said, "I'm the new county manager, I will get paid." I have never been paid. You Lee Davis knows about this. And I told my wife and him, I said, "Look, I'm going to demand that they pay me. And I'm going to use my tax, and I'm going to say, 'How can they expect me to pay? At least I have a leverage here. I can maybe get it out in the paper where I force their hand to have to pay me.'" But then, when you put my wife's name in the paper, you know, she said, "I can't believe my name's in the paper." And then my daughter said, "You're not going to put my mama's name in the paper." So I had to come next to them and pay my tax. But I didn't want to. And it's, this deal about this Matthews boy here, I'm not standing up for what he's doing, if he's not working those hours. I'm not. But Dad Jim, y'all have to know that since the day he was elected, y'all crucified him. And why would anybody want to destroy someone like that? And I've even had a commissioner say, "Here, it's my hatred for David Francis." What David Francis did, I would have did. I would have took y'all's money. Y'all are the responsible party for it. Y'all need to get your house in order and get straightened up.
Is that, are you finished?
Well, yeah.
I've let you go way over. I just want to make sure that you got it all out.
But the three-minute rule come in during, when all those people here, and that was going to be for that time. Now, y'all need to change that back to where, would you like to hear what people has to say, Brandon? Would you like to hear it? This is over with, the three-minute rule should be over with. Because that was only when we had so many people during the news and all that, that was when it was put into effect, is that right?
We have followed that for as long as I can remember.
It was put in during the news. I was there. Kevin, don't come up with that. I was there.
Okay, that's enough, okay? Thank you very much, Ms. Henson. Next is Lynda Bennett.
Hello, my name is Lynda Bennett. And one thing that's disturbing me is that I feel like the commissioners are using the newspapers to, instead of a court of law. You're going into the newspapers, you're making statements that cannot be proven one way or another. You do not have to swear on a Bible that you're telling the truth. The newspaper certainly has no obligation to tell the truth. I feel like the commissioners are being inserted into the public dialogue during the election season, and that you're being quoted as though you're an authority on the issue, that you know things that other people may not know. But you're not being sworn in to tell the truth. You're just reporting to a newspaper. Now, two things could happen. You could be telling the truth, or you could be not telling the truth, or the newspaper could say whatever they want. They have no obligation to tell the truth. So what we're finding in the newspapers of today is that this whole court case is being tried about Mike Matthews without anyone holding their hand over a Bible or swearing to any of the facts that everybody's talking about as though it's true. But we know that everything the newspaper says is not true. So I would like for the commissioners to refrain from getting involved in the newspapers, making statements in which we believe people and the public, the voters, believe might be true, but there's no way to substantiate what's being said. So please, during the election season, if you would refrain from making comments about other people that are up for election during the election season that cannot be documented and aren't even, you're not even trying to document it. I would appreciate your withdrawal from that action or those activities at this time. We've heard enough about it in the newspaper. Thank you.
Okay, no one else has signed up. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, now we'll close the public comment and move to constituent concerns. Mike, you have any constituent concerns?
Nothing right now. Greg's going to cover mine when he, Greg Shute.
Just had a few on the opioid issue, which we're going to be talking about here in a minute, and several comments on the tax collector issue as well. So, that's it.
Do you have any comments on that?
On the tax?
I didn't know, because it's not up. The opioid issue's coming up, but we're not going to be discussing the tax collector issue. I just want to make sure that-
No, I mean, it is what it is. You know, I agree with what's been said tonight as far as facts need to be stated, and, you know, nothing needs to be sugar-coated or swept under the rug, but we did hear about it early on, I will say that. But you can't go off of rumors when you first hear about anything. If we did, we'd get ourselves in a lot of trouble. We did find out, or I did personally, probably back, I don't even want to state a time, because it was after the primary. A lot of people said, "We knew about it before the primary ever happened," which we did have, I did have some hearsay or rumors at that time that there was an issue, but I didn't know for sure until after the primary happened, so I do want to state that. That's me personally. These other guys may have known something that I didn't know, but that's what I knew. And you know, what I've said all along, we just, I personally just want somebody that's going to show up and do the job. That's the bottom line. I don't care what their party affiliation is, as long as they'll do that, as long as they'll show up and do a good job, that's what I care about. So I guess that's what I would have to say. And that's what I shared with the constituents that called me. Their main concern was that it was a, that we were trying to sway the election one way or the other, and I know me personally, that's not the case. Again, I'm only speaking for Brandon and not the other commissioners, but everybody knows I am a Republican, and like I said, I just want somebody that's going to be here and do a good job. I don't care if they've got a D or an L or an R or whatever they got after their name. That's the bottom line. And I want to support them and help them in that, because if we don't have somebody that's doing the job, then that puts us all in a bad position. So I guess that's what I would have to say about it.
Well, and Ms. Pierce, we're going to talk about the opioid lawsuit in just a minute. And I've had some discussions with Mike Fuller, who's one of the lead attorneys on that, in that matter. You know, as far as the comments by Mr. Henson and Ms. Bennett, since Mr. Matthews has been elected, I can tell you, and I'll tell it here, and if I need to swear to it and be honest, I mean, our statements, we try to tell the truth despite. I don't understand the issue of whether you have to swear under oath to be telling the truth, because you should tell the truth. But I can confirm and tell you that there's nothing these commissioners have done that has not tried to support Mr. Matthews in his position. When there has been an issue that has been brought forward to me or to us because there needs to be assistance, I have told them, and anybody in this room can tell you, I have said, "We need to do that and provide that." But I cannot go and perform Mr. Matthews' job for him, and it's not my responsibility to do that. And I cannot ignore when I have county employees constantly telling me issues with Mr. Matthews. And I cannot ignore what they say to me. I try to, because I don't like to talk about other people. That's the last thing I want to do. The last thing I want to do is even deal with this issue. I want people to just do their job. That's all I want. I want all the county employees to do their job. And you talk about Mr. Francis, and did he do other jobs? He did other jobs because he did the tax collector job. So, you know, when we're asked questions, we try to answer the questions. And for me, I've tried to avoid responding to some of those questions, because personally, I like Mike fine. This has, and I mean, the fact of the statements that have been made here in public by different commissioners of different parties should tell you, this has nothing to do with politics, absolutely nothing to do with politics. And you can say that, but it's just not true. And at least, it's not true on my part. I don't know about anybody else's part, but I can tell you, it has nothing to do with politics for me, never has. I don't know that anything I said in the paper was that damning, but I answered the questions that they provided to me.
I'll just reiterate what you said, Kirk. I've answered the questions that the reporter asked me to answer. And if there's a Bible here, I'll swear on it. You know, I always tell the truth. If you think I told a lie, let me know what it is. And the tax collector position should be elected, it should not be elected, it should be appointed. We can't make him come to work on time, but if he's appointed, we can. We can't make him do certain things, but if he's appointed, we can. And that's just the problem, you know, that's just the bottom line, and that's the problem as far as I'm concerned. My dad taught me to work. He got us out of the band. I had to milk a cow before I went to school in the morning. We worked hard, and when I see somebody making a big salary and they're not working hard because they don't have to, that bothers me. That bothers me a lot. And it doesn't matter what party it is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the taxpayers are looked out for. I don't think they did that in Buncombe County, but they're going, we're doing it in Haywood County. We're making sure that whatever somebody is doing their job, that they're doing their job. And I'm, you know, and we hear rumors all the time. It's not, you know, employees have issues with Mr. Matthews, and I'm sorry they do. You know, we can't help that, because he's elected, not appointed. So when somebody's appointed, then we five can, who are elected, can make a decision to remove that person. And that's just, you know, that's the way 99 other counties do, and they do that for a good reason, I think. I think that's a good point, and I don't know why our commissioners of the past let this slide as long as they did, but they did. So I stand behind all the statements I've made, and I'm not a lapdog for a party. If you want a lapdog, when the election comes, you can elect you a lapdog. But I'm not going to be a lapdog, and that's just the bottom line. That's my statement.
All right, we'll move on to administrative agency reports. Next is Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Year-End Occupancy Tax Report. Lynn Collins, the TDA Executive Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Before I start my report, I would just like to say thank you for a great concentrated effort with all the planning for the storm. I especially want to thank Greg for all of his efforts. Everybody pulled together and I think did a great job in the preparedness for what could potentially have happened, but also for all the evacuees that we did have coming into the area. So I just want to say thank you for everybody's support on that and everybody's help on that. I'm here tonight to give you a report on the occupancy tax share end. And so, as you know, we have the tax divided in 3%, which comes directly back to the TDA for the purpose of marketing the county overall, and then the 1% which goes back to the zip code areas for the purpose of marketing those areas. On the 3% side, that's the first graph you'll see here, the first chart, you will see that we finished the year 11% ahead of budget and 9% ahead of last year. So tourism is still growing. We have seen a lot of changes this year. This year's been very different from previous years. Historically, what, things that were trending are not necessarily trending the same this year. I know in the visitor center, the days that we have normally been busy previously are different this year. We have different markets that are coming in this year, so it's been interesting. You don't really know what to expect, but it's all a good surprise when it does happen. The second graph you will see shows the breakdown of the occupancy tax by category. We use these categories that are on the bottom of this sheet in breaking down all of the different types of accommodations we have here, so we can track that and see what's trending along the way. So you can see that hotel and motel is normally the highest one, and that fluctuates by seasonality. You'll see in the winter months that traditionally, the vacation rentals outpace the hotel motels. And the only time you're going to see a difference in that is weather-related. The folks like to stay over the wintertime in the vacation rentals, but if they come to town and we've had a big snow and they can't get there, then you'll see that fluctuation shift to the hotel motel side during the winter. The next chart, graph is, or spreadsheet, rather, is on the 1%. And we have this broken down by zip code, and you have three columns per zip code for each different area. So the first column you'll see were the actual collections from this previous year. The center column for each zip code is the projected budget, and the third column is the actual that was collected for the previous budget year. So it gives you a good comparison month-to-month, but also year-to-date and overall. So you'll see on the next to the last line at the bottom that Canton finished 6% ahead of the previous year. Clyde finished 57% ahead of the previous year. Lake Geneska, 45% ahead. Maggie Valley was flat this year, and Waynesville finished about 8% ahead of last year. We're seeing some fluctuation in those percentages, especially in Clyde and Lake Geneska. We're seeing some fluctuation in those percentages, especially in Clyde and Lake Geneska. In the Lake Geneska area, that's directly attributable to the renovations that they have done at both the Terrace and the Lambethian. And they're also doing more consumer marketing than they have done in the past as well. In Clyde, we see that attributed to some additional accounts in vacation rentals as well as Buffalo Creek Vacations and Major's Estate is where we're seeing the primary fluctuation there. Canton is staying pretty even over the years. Waynesville's pretty even, and so we're seeing the balance of that fluctuation come from The next spreadsheet shows you a historical perspective on the 1% occupancy tax. It's 10 years old now, so this kind of shows you for each zip code, the change from year to year and how it has grown over the 10 years of the program. And on the very bottom line, you'll see the percentages that each of the zip codes has contributed to the 1% over the history of the program. So you will see right there the difference in fluctuation from Maggie Valley versus Lake Geneska and Clyde on that sheet. The next sheet just gives you some examples of some of the projects that have been funded through the zip code 1%. It really has a wide range of things that we fund. It can be marketing expenses. It could be tourism-related expenses. It could be capital expenses. There are all kinds of different things. So I just wanted to give you a sampling of the types of things that are included from each zip code that that 1% does fund. And the last sheet in here is the economic impact of travel, and this just came out a few weeks ago, and it is prepared for the North Carolina Tourism Office by the U.S. Travel Association. And tourism in Haywood County generated expenditures of $182.27 million in 2017, which was a 1.95% increase from 2016. It accounted for more than 1,820 jobs in Haywood County. Travel to Haywood generated $40.90 million in payroll, and local tax revenues generated from travel to Haywood County are $6.90 million, and state tax revenues generated from travel to Haywood County are $10.9 million. And the very last line on that, I know is always a favorite of Commissioner Upton's, and that's how much travel saves our tax, local taxpayers every year. So as a result of having tourism in Haywood County, the tax savings per Haywood County resident is $272.79. So that's a very brief overview on the last year of tourism in Haywood County. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I do know we had people down east, friends of mine, that stayed in Maggie Valley this week.
Yes.
Get away from storms.
Yes, we've had, we have a lot of those folks, and a lot of them are still here because they can't get back yet.
Lynn, what do you think on the new motel, the Hampton Inn? Can you comment on what you've heard as far as people looking for that type of accommodation?
We frequently have requests for that particular flag, and we also have requests for other flags that we don't have as well, you know, that bring some new market share into the area because those people travel based on their points, and that's where they're going to stay. So I think that'll bring some new market share into us, and I also think that it will help to have those additional rooms here in Waynesville.
And just being the commissioner that sits on the TDA board, a lot of new ideas all the time. Got a very, staff that is very social media-oriented and tapping all the new things that's out there and working hard, and so things really look good.
We have won numerous awards this year with our marketing agency that we have. They're very creative, and it's showing based on the awards we're winning. So it's been a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
It was a good report. All right, next we've got discussion adjustment to the agenda. I do have one item that I need to add under the consent agenda as item number four, and that is an approval of the resolution ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency and termination proclamation. And I'll present that, and then Haywood County Response to Hurricane Florence. Greg Schupin's going to provide us with any incidences over the weekend and how they handle that. We, okay, so I'll add that as number four and discuss that then. Does anyone else have anything they want to add to the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda. And the first item on the consent agenda is request approval of September 4, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Anyone have any changes, corrections to those? Then if not, we'll move to request approval of August 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, Assistant Tax Assessor, come forward this time and give that.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval of the August 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. We have a very short report this month, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
I had questioned Greg. I noticed there was a church on there, on the Meadow Grove Church. It wasn't that much money, but I was just wondering why, what do churches usually pay taxes on?
Well, they're typically exempt, but sometimes there could possibly be a storage building or something on there that doesn't necessarily belong to them. It could belong to someone else, and then they find out that that's on there, and then they would be required to pay on it or actually get refunded on it either way, depending on who owns it. We find those things, you know, in our audits and things we do on exempted properties, and so those occasionally come up.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.